The time is now six P M. It is made twenty 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 four regular meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees hereby called Board. But the minutes show that all Board members are present and that the meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Members Meeting Act, Texas Urban Code, Chapter five five one. All items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state policy. I want to extend a warm welcome to everyone here tonight. We are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. On behalf of the Board, we are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievements, set goals, discipline reports, approve budgets, contract personnel points, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions, we're to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of superintendent. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the Board. As our guests, we welcome you to observe and listen. Again, we are pleased that you have taken this time to join us. When I asked you to sign on to cell phones at this time, please rise if an invitation be given by Ms. Harrell. Remain standing until fully completed and honor the Texas flag and be late by this program.
Let's lead this field by the United States of America and to a religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number two of the intended recognition to present on Mr. Calvert.
Just like we've got, we don't agree with this, but we're going to start off with a group. Normally, they don't put themselves first because they put others first, but this is our retirees for this school year. So I'm asking Miss Gabe to come up to announce them and they'll come by, take their hand, hang over, take their picture from the backdrop and sit off in chairs. But there's a lot of things we could say about this group as we could every year, but just simply thank you. Thank you for dedicating your time, sacrificing your time with your family and all those other things that you've really made a difference for your kids. So this is a well-deserved retirement, so just thank you all and yourself now finally, Miss Gabe.
All right, thank you, Mr. Calvert. So we are very excited. We have thirty-one retirees on our list so far, and it is growing each day, but we did want to take some time to recognize our retirees that we have. I'm going to start with Sarah Shepherd, retiring from New Caney High School, a teacher. And then when I call the names, we're coming down. David Moore from Transportation. Lynn Blackwell from Transportation, a bus driver. Mary Hunter, Bus Aide from Transportation Department. Danny Niedem, Child Nutrition Director. Delante Tavasales, Bus Driver, Transportation Department. Clarence Birkin, Bus Driver. Audrey Birkin, Bus Driver. We have Lori Gates, another bus driver. Jody Griffin, Teacher, retiring from New Caney High School. Kimberly Kendrick, Teacher, retiring from New Caney High School. Mary Pinto, Teacher at Tobola Elementary. Janet Plunkett, Teacher from Keaper Crossing Middle School. Diana Rodriguez Denaza, Instructional Aide from Dogwood Elementary. Julie Santoro, Dyslexia Specialist from Sorders Mill Elementary. Claudia Boils, Teacher from Keaper Crossing Middle School. Kelly McDonald Derosik, Counselor, Porter High School. Sandra Canterbury, Computer Tech in our Technology Department. Nancy Cozad, Associate Principal from New Caney High School. Edward Gamper, Security Police Officer Sergeant Level. Erwin Ronados, Custodial Support Services. Jim Holly, Athletics Director. Tamasa Lopez, Custodial Support Services. Robin Graham, Diagnostician in our Special Education Department. Lucy Jameson, Campus Media Specialist at Brookwood Forest Elementary. Trish Beal, Principal, Infinity Early College High School. Cindy Collins, Teacher from Woodridge Forest Middle School. Lori Sinowski, Our Director of Student Services at the Central Admin Building. Bonnie Ryan, Mechanic in our Transportation Department. Lisa Fleming, Bus Driver with Transportation. And last but not least, Richard Best, Custodial Support Services.
We're good, everybody.
Congratulations on your retirement again, and have fun waiting next August when all those young buses arrive. Next on the list is our Campus Recognition, and we are going to start off with the doctor, I should say, dark doctor, the dark though.
We have a lot, so we have long time. First off, I'd like to thank the School Board and Mr. Calvert for allowing us to do this to showcase some of our wonderful people, our staff members, some of our auxiliary staff, and of course, our students on our campus to showcase them here tonight. We really greatly appreciate that. Also want to thank all of our Porter High School staff members and our parents and our friends that came to support these students and staff members here tonight. Thank you for being here. We're first going to start off with Ms. Crystal Schrader. Ms. Schrader is our Child Nutrition Cafeteria, Head Cafeteria person on our campus, and we greatly appreciate her. I'm just going to be honest with you, she's kind of been in a tough situation, came to our school in the middle of the school year to take over as the lead. And so she weathered that storm, and she's done a great job since. She is in her first year in this position, and she has done a great job in taking this job over. She has respect for coworkers in our staff. She is a hard worker and always has a smile on her face. She does all that she can do to help our students and communicates with all of us when necessary. Crystal is a big part of our culture at Porter High School, and we love having her here with us. Thank you, Crystal. Next up is Mr. Gabriel Gallegos. Gabriel is our Lead Custodian on our campus, and he's an exceptional custodian on our campus. He is finishing his first full year as Lead Custodian. He is not only custodian, but he is a handyman for little projects teachers and staff being helped with. He is always the first answer on the radio when we need assistance from custodial, and he always keeps our school spotless clean. Parents always talk about how beautiful and clean our school is when they are walking into our games or are here for events. Our school is a beautiful and clean place because of him and his team. Thank you, Gabriel. Next up is Ms. Jennifer Mixon. Ms. Mixon is our L M C Aide. Not only that, Ms. Mixon is in her second year of being here with us at P H S. She embodies what its part and excellence is, and we love her for that. Ms. Mixon always has a smile on her face and is always willing to help others. She has developed the processes for our substitute teachers and has always done a great job of making sure all of our classes are covered. And if you work at the high school, you know that is a tough job in the spring on a Friday. She is loved by everyone, and her and Mrs. Ogata is truly, and Mrs. Ogata is truly grateful to have her with her in the library. Mrs. Mixon, thank you for all you do for Porter High School. We are better because of you. Next is our teacher, and that's Ms. Kristen Maddox. Ms. Maddox has been an incredible asset to our science department at Porter High School for the last four years. She consistently displays excellence in teaching and commitment to the success of our students. Her passion for high-quality science instruction is seen every day in her classrooms, driving student inquiry and passion for learning. One of Mrs. Maddox's most commendable qualities is her ability to develop meaningful and positive relationships with students and colleagues. Her impact extends beyond the walls of her classroom, and she has shaped the minds and lives of countless individuals who have had the privilege of being her student or colleague. Thank you, Ms. Maddox. I love all you guys, and this is my favorite part, is the students. Our C T student, and bear with me, guys, because you guys have accomplished a lot. Our C T student is Mr. River Doughty. River Doughty is the embodiment of excellence in career and technical education. As a salutatorian of our twenty twenty-four senior graduating class, River has not only excelled academically, but has also left an unforgettable mark on our school community with his balanced enthusiasm and innovation. Whether he's dreaming up ambitious projects like a colossal projectile launcher that can command here our biggest hallway, or an extravagant elevator design whisking passengers to a V I P party lounge complete with L E D lights and a water-filled pool. River's creativity knows no bounds. His ingenuity shines bright in every endeavor he undertakes. From designing the tiniest marble sword in Porter High School history to animating the friendly A I Texan armadillo, providing visitors with the best trip recommendations to saving the bees with Hyput. River's passion for innovation extends beyond engineering. He's also dedicated to bridging generational gaps with Gymbridge and ensuring school safety during emergencies with Pathfinder. With each project, River demonstrates not only his technical capabilities, but also his commitment to making a positive impact on the world around him. He leads by the mantra, go big or go home, evident in every ambitious endeavor he undertakes. River's leadership and dedication propel our teams to victory after victory. Allow me to highlight just a few of his remarkable accomplishments. He is a three-time Samsung Software Tomorrow National Champion, two-time TSA San Jacinto Region President, four-time TSA State Winner, State TSA High Point Score for two thousand twenty-three, more gold medals than Michael Phelps. Four-time U I L Best Robotics State Qualifier, Texas Best Robotics First Place Robot two thousand twenty-three, Texas Best Robotics Second Place Best Award two thousand twenty-three, two-time Best Robotics U I L and State Second Runner-Up two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two, three-time Engineering Student of the Year. River's journey with us has been nothing short of extraordinary, and I have no doubt that his future will be equally limitless. With balanced potential and a spirit that knows no limits, River is poised to conquer new horizons to redefine the boundaries of what is possible in the world of engineering. We wish him the best of luck at Stanford University where he will study Aerospace Engineering. Ms. Parker Warren. Ms. Parker Warren is a two-time, and she's our fine art student. Ms. Parker Warren is a two-time International Qualifier in Musical Theater for the International Testmate Society. She has played leaps in Porter High School's musicals for the past two years, including as Donna and this production of Mamma Mia. Both years she received nominations as a lead for the Tommy Tune Awards. Parker also served as a student director for last year's area qualifying U I L one-act play and directed Porter High School's first-ever marathon play for the International Testmate Society. She has been a leader in our theater program and an integral part in the growth of our student-led drama club, and is currently starring in our U I L one-act, The Old Man and the Old Moon, which they are performing right after this tonight. Two thousand twenty-two Texas Music Educators Association All-Region Choir Member, two thousand twenty-three T M A All-State Choir Member, two thousand twenty-four T M E A All-State Choir Member. She's the first two-year All-State for Choir and District History. Played the Cowardly Lion in a production of Wizard of Oz, played Rizzo in a production of Grease, played Donna in a production of Mamma Mia, two thousand twenty-three twenty-four School Year Choir President. She's going on to major in music performance at Furman University in South Carolina, Ms. Parker Warren. Next is Ms. Kate Payton, and she's one of our female athletes. Kate Payton plans to attend Saint Andrews University in North Carolina. She intends on majoring in Criminal Justice. Kate is a three-year letterman, having been on Marcy since her sophomore year of volleyball. During each of the three seasons on Marcy, she has been voted for by her peers and coaches as Defensive Player of the Year. She has also received All-District Awards such as Honorable Mention, First Team All-District, and Academic All-District. She was chosen for the Greater Houston Volleyball Association Five-A Postseason Team this past season as well. Kate has also served as captain for the Spartans' junior and senior year, showing leadership positivity to her teammates to help keep them focused in times of adversity. Kate shows leadership through her actions. She likes to get to know underclassmen and help build confidence in them. Kate shows determination and grit when faced with challenges in athletics, but also in academics. Ms. Kate Payton. Our next student is Mr. James DeBoer. James DeBoer is one of our male athletes. Through his first four years, but through his first, not his first four, but his only four, through his four years here at Porter High School, James DeBoer has developed to become an exceptional athlete with a long list of accomplishments in both golf and extracurricular activities. With an impressive record of eight high school tournament victories, James was the first Porters Spartan to advance to the state championships in two thousand twenty-two in golf. He demonstrates unparalleled skill and determination on the golf course. His success extends beyond high school tournaments, with six additional thirty-six hole tournament wins, showing his consistency and excellence in the sport. Putting accolades aside, James' most impactful contribution at Porter High School was demonstrated through his leadership both on and off the field. His consistency exemplifies the qualities necessary for success to his peers, showing humility by working with any teammate to improve. Never wanting to complain, James would consistently prioritize the team's needs over his own, and that was most evident in the way he interacted with his teammates. James held such a high level of respect for me that I often saw his perspective on team-related matters, and this is coming from Coach Martinez, confident that his insight was focused on improving the team. In every aspect, he embodies the essence of what being a Porters Spartan is all about. Coaching James has been an absolute joy, and Coach Martinez is looking forward to seeing the extent of his influence on the future. Mr. James DeBoer is attending the Naval Academy, and he will be playing golf at the Naval Academy, and I promise you one day we will see him as president of something, man. And last but not least, is Mr. Cantrell Brooks, also known as C J. As you can see, he has some awesome bleep around his neck. C J is a two-year letterman, pole walker for the Porters Spartans Men's Track Team. When C J joined our team as a junior, he made an immediate positive impact with the example of hard work in the classroom and on the track. In two thousand twenty-three, C J set the school record in poleball at fourteen feet, three inches and finished third at the regional championships. Returning to us this year, C J ramped up his speed training, and it paid off by resetting the school record to fifteen feet, six inches. C J placed second at this year's regional championships and won first at the U I L State Track and Field Beat, making him the best pole walker in the state of Texas in five A. He has done all of this while maintaining a three-point-nine GPA. C J is a great competitor and a teammate, and showed his dedication to our program by helping us on our four-by-one-hundred meter relay teams multiple times this year, and by his example in every practice, working hard to be the best. He helped and encouraged the underclassmen walters to do their best, and I was always excited to see his teammates be successful. C J cares about the team and is dedicated to getting the best out of himself and others. So we know that he will be a great asset to any organization he is a part of. C J will be continuing his education and athletic career at Purdue Northwest University.
All right, next up tonight is Mr. Powell, Lieutenant of the United States.
There we go, plus seven. Thank you, Board, for giving us the opportunity to shine a light on some of the awesome things that are going on in our schools and with our students. The first person I'm going to recognize tonight is Abigail Lesby. Abigail is New Caney High School's Teacher of the Year. She was also our head cheer coach this year, and that'd be enough, just to be recognized just. But she did incredible this year, led her cheer team to nationals for the second consecutive year. Coach, she's an incredible teacher and a hard worker. She stepped up to the challenge of being a first-year cheer coach and head coach, and she knocked that out of the park. In addition to being an incredible coach, she is also an incredible teacher. She has a special bond with the other teachers in the English Hall. There is often laughter coming from the D Hall, and she is often there having a good time with her fellow teachers. She will be teaching English two A P for us this next year. Her students and fellow teachers name her as one of the biggest advocates for advanced academics on our campus. Abby is also a New Caney High School graduate and someone we proudly believe in. Thank you, Abby, for all you do. All right, next I'd like to recognize Mr. Jim Baxter. Jim Baxter is a new teacher to New Caney High School. He's our welding teacher, and he has done some incredible things with our welding program. Mr. Baxter has taken his students all over state to compete in welding competitions, has consistently brought home the hardware. His students have won forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in scholarships this year. He has helped his students secure twenty-four welding certifications. Many of these students are pursuing a career in welding because of Mr. Baxter's positive influence in their life. Beyond that, Mr. Baxter is always willing to help and to be involved. Jim has manned the grill for us at several staff events, and he never hesitates to ask what he can do to help. He has a big smile, a big smile no matter what is going on. His students tell me that they have learned so much this year. Jim never stops moving around his welding shop and creating beautiful things. It's a joy to watch him teach and engage with his students that are down at home in his welding shop. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We're lucky to have you at New Caney High School. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Tamara again. Tamara is one of our A P Secretaries, and she will be my secretary this next year. I have known Tamara for over six years and seen the good work she has done year after year. She has an attention to detail that is second to none. Right now, she manages the office for two A Ps and two counselors. She juggles all of this, and she never, ever, ever stops smiling. Her A Ps and her counselors love her dearly, and she helps them shine. We're glad that they've restored her from their office to my office this next year. Tamara is one of the hardest workers at New Caney High School, and we are beyond lucky to have her on our team. Tamara has the best laugh at New Caney High School. We all enjoy making her laugh, and she truly brightens every room that she enters. My current secretary will be working at central offices this next year, and I am beyond thankful that Tamara will be working in the principal's office with me this next year. Thank you, Tamara. Our custodian representative is Yahira Sanchez. Yahira has been our lead custodian for six years. She is so positive, and she is such a hard worker. The clean of campus as large and spread out as New Caney High School is no small feat, but she manages this chaos with so much composure. I am continuously impressed by her ability to get it all done. Most recently, I have seen her help us set up our cafeteria for at least four different residential segments. She makes our cafeteria look beautiful for whatever event will be hosted, and then tears that all back down and gets it ready for breakfast the next morning. Her custodians work hard for her, and they respect her. They love her because she works right along beside each of them. New Caney High School is lucky to have Yahira Sanchez. Thank you, Yahira. Our Child Nutrition Employee Selection is Brianna Vasquez. Brianna was with me at K C M S and came over to New Caney High School second semester this year. We're so lucky to have her at New Caney High School. Brianna is a team player and a hard worker. She works with us every day and is always willing to tackle the next curve ball I throw her away. Through the whole testing season this year, she has been flexible with her service and her menu, making sure that our students were fed and well taken care of. Brianna is kind, and she never lets the stress of feeding the largest campus in New Caney High School get to her. I've seen a change in her staff since she came to New, I've seen a change in the staff since she came to New Caney High School. She expects her staff members to treat students with kindness and respect, and she always greets her students with a smile. Brianna, we are lucky to have you on our team. Thank you. Our student athlete is Levi Head. I have known Levi since he was in the eighth grade. I've always admired how Levi carried himself with pride, and he always is working hard. He also had my favorite outfit of all time on a dress up day three and a half years ago. He was in the eighth grade, it was Famous Movie Day, and he dressed up like Forrest Gump and talked to the female student into dressing up like Jenny. To have this kind of good taste in middle school music amounts to greatness. Levi is currently the top of his class. He is an extremely committed student above everything else. He has been a football and baseball athlete for the last three years. His coaches report that he is extremely coachable, intelligent on the field, athletic, and a great example to his teammates and others. He has already earned several hours of college credit through A P exams. He shows cattle through F F A and somehow manages to find enough spare time to run a small business on the side. You need any landscaping done, see him after the board meeting tonight, or just Google Mo and Go Live here. You didn't think he said it. I choose Levi because of his attitude. He's a great example of what it means to work hard. He's a great example of what it means to work hard. Thank you, Levi, for representing New Caney High School with excellence in all you do. Madeline Reeves is our second student athlete. Madeline is always smiling. If you spend any time at New Caney High School, you will see Madeline positively influencing those around her. She excels at many sports. She played basketball, soccer, and made varsity track her freshman year. Her sophomore year, she made varsity cross country and medal at four meetings. She also played varsity soccer this year. I watched her play mini-games this year and was consistently impressed with her communication, ball handling, and sportsmanship. In addition to excelling at sports, Madeline is an excellent student. She is a member of the National Honor Society and is currently in the top ten percent of her class. She's also a member of FFA where she has shown lamps and competed in CDs and LDBs. I chose Madeline because of her attitude. She carries herself with positivity that is infectious to those around her. She will continue to excel because of this attitude. Thank you, Madeline, for representing New Caney High School with excellence. Our fine arts student representative is Nicole DeLoren. Nicole is a senior this year and is our senior class secretary. Nicole is a beautiful vocalist and has been a varsity choir member since her freshman year. Her voice continues to develop, and she has excelled this year in the choir. Nicole is an all-state triple choir member, representing the best of the best this year and going to stay the same with others. Nicole has a love of music and education that is evident. Nicole's always laughing and smiling with her friends. She plans to pursue a career in education. Nicole will be attending the Houston State University in the fall to study and elementary education. Nicole is also the president of our Eagles for Christ Club. I chose Nicole because of her attitude. Nicole works hard and displays humility in all that she does. Thank you, Nicole, for representing New Caney High School with excellence in all you do. Our last student representative is our CTE representative, Ms. Kaylee Winksen. I've gotten to know Kaylee quite well this year. She is a member of my Student Advisory Council, and she is not shy about letting me know when we get to improve. I love this about Kaylee. I can always count on her to give me a honest take on what needs work. She also isn't shy about expressing gratitude. We always end our student advisory meetings with a chance for students to shout out teachers. Always have to tell Kaylee to limit her responses to his two or three teachers because she has kind things to say about most of her teachers. Kaylee's an excellent student. She is a member of the National Honor Society and is in the top ten percent of her class. In addition to this, she is also an accomplished FFA member. She will be the FFA president this next year. She won Grand Champagne Handi Craft at the EMC Fair. She was crowned the 2023 Fair Queen. She also made so with her pigs at Montgomery County Fair and EMC Fair. Kaylee has other FFA accomplishments as well. There were a lot more. She's an incredible FFA student. Her impact on our FFA program is manifestable. In addition to all of this, Kaylee has also already earned two industry-based certifications. I chose Kaylee because of her attitude. Her enthusiasm is a thing to behold. She will be successful in any endeavor because her passion shines bright. Thank you, Kaylee, for representing New Caney High School with excellence in all you do. And again, thank you so much for giving us the chance to represent these people.
All right, and last but not least, Mr. Perkins is here with West Fork High School. He's standing there for Miss Hania. She is a junior college world series supporter of honor in their electric fair. So Mr. Perkins, the West Fork staff, welcome on down.
Thank you, New Caney. New Caney High School trustees for the opportunity to recognize a few members of the West Fork High School community. Their talent is admirable, but more importantly, it's the embodiment of the school's greater values, gratitude, accountability, trustworthiness, optimism, respect, and service. We would like to recognize our fine arts student, Angelina Velazquez. Angelina embodies the spirit of artistic excellence at West Fork High School. Only a sophomore, Angelina's achievements in multiple artistic realms are nothing short of remarkable. This year, Angelina may be as a member of the very competitive 2024 Texas All-State Choir, a rare accomplishment for any student, let alone a sophomore. She is a member of the Varsity Corral, a member of West Fork Marching Band, and serves as drum major. Angelina, as a member of the region choir and band, Angelina's artistic journey doesn't end there, as she also was also a cast member of the West Fork Theatre UIL One Act Play. With unwavering dedication, she uplifts her school, community, demonstrating that true artistry lies not only in talent, but also in character. Angelina is the epitome of excellence in our fine arts programs, a shining star at West Fork. Next, we'd like to recognize our career technology education student, Dara Dougout. Dara is a student who is pursuing her cosmetology license. She is also pursuing core complete coursework through Lone Star College, and she qualified for state in her freshman year in cosmetology with her formal up due project. At state, she received state superior ratings. Dara is the first to volunteer. She is a hard worker and on a path to success with her authentic achievement and job skills. Now, we would like to recognize two of our top student athletes at West Fork. Cole Rippon. Cole was a second-place finisher at the 4A States 1B in the 500 Free and placed eleventh in the 200 Free at the States 1B. He made first-team All-State for the 500 Free, second-team All-State for the 200 Free, second-team All-State in the 200 relay, and second-team All-State in the 400 Free relay. We're proud of Cole and his accomplishments. Cole is hardworking and is not one to boast or brag. He lets his accomplishments speak for themselves. He is considered a leader on the team, not because of his words, but by the amount of humility and hard work that he demonstrates every day. Ella Billrooks. Ella was also a swimmer who achieved to state, who advanced using to state and placed sixth in the 200 individual medal and eighth in the 100 Free at the state meet. Ella earned second-team All-State in the 100 Free, first-team All-State in the 200 individual medal, and second-team All-State in the 400 Free relay. Ella is also a member of the West Fork National Honor Society. She is a determined individual who always strives to push herself to the next level. Ella's reliable and trustworthy athlete, student athlete, whom her peers can depend on. We can't wait to see these two student athletes make an even bigger splash next year. Teacher Renee Wolfes. West Fork High School's Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Wolfes' dedication to her students, innovative teaching methods, and passion for literature have made significant impact on our school community. Her optimistic energy and contagious, is contagious, and her students often remark how seeing her makes their day a little brighter. Her commitment to foster a love for reading and writing has inspired countless students to reach their full potential, and she continues to serve West Fork students every day, with a smile. Our professional Maricela Presley. Mrs. Presley. Mrs. Presley's cheerful spirit and dedication to uplifting others has immensely enriched our campus culture. Her trustworthy nature and commitment to supporting students and staff alike make her an invaluable asset. West Fork would absolutely not do the same without Mrs. Presley. And her role as one of the leaders of our sunshine committee is a perfect fit, as she can be described as a pile of sunshine. Child nutrition Alicia Garcia. Mrs. Garcia's commitment to providing healthy, delicious meals and her friendly, welcoming attitude have made her one of the students' favorite people to see on campus. She is kind and supportive of every student she interacts with. She has an unwavering dedication to students' well-being and an exceptional work ethic, and we cherish Mrs. Garcia as a family member of the West Fork team. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Roxanda Dean. As our D custodian, she has created a strong team that understands how important they are to the overall operation of the school. Ms. Dean is a leader and a reliable member of the West Fork team. She ensures that the faculty is always ready, organized, and safe, the facility is always ready, organized, and safe, a safe environment for our students and staff. Her dedication to these things is truly commendable. Mrs. Dean's attention to detail, reliability, and positive attitude impact everyone she comes in contact with, and she has been a pivotal part of making West Fork the campus it is today.
All right, but on the floor, the agenda is actually open forum. I have number three, it's the superintendent. I have been a fun little bit, and I'm going to turn it over to the college staff.
Hey, good evening. My name is Hannah Holmott. I'm a former native, I'm a native GT and CCMR program associate in instructional department. I have the pleasure of working for Dr. Sintelecure, Director of Urban Instruction, and I also work with Simone Barnes, our CCMR specialist. Tonight, that's all of them, beautiful faces right there. Tonight, we're going to be going over, we look forward to spending some time with you and giving you an overview of our programs, highlighting our students' and staff's participation and performance, and finally, I'll share a little glimpse of our anticipated growth this year. So I made something that makes it really be divided into four areas. The gifted and talented program, our instructional programs, assessments, and CCMR. So let's get started with gifted and talented. This year, the university screened all of our kindergarten and second-grade students and we fully assessed 550 GT recruits. We currently provide services to 1,255 GT students across all of our campuses and grade levels. At the elementary level, we've highlighted an optional new curriculum this year which we look forward to rolling out solely next year for our GT students. And at the middle school and high school level, we service our GT students through their advanced academics courses or classes. The state of Texas requires teachers who provide GT instruction and services to receive their 30-hour training and a yearly six-hour update. And this year, through our partnership with the Houston Area GT POA, they completed over 1,100 hours of training. Our next area is advanced instruction. This includes honors, AP dual credit, and our new On-Ramps program. This year, our AP enrollment increased by a plus of 37%, which is pretty big growth in one year. And just last Friday, our students wrapped up this year's AP testing. This summer, 22 AP teachers will attend a very intense 30-hour content-specific training, and this is part of our planned three-year rotation to ensure that our AP teachers stay current with their course exam requirements and to strengthen their teaching skills and strategies. We partner with Lone Star College Gateway to provide our dual-credit classes. And this spring, summer, and fall semesters for 2023, our students completed 615 courses. On-Ramps is our new dual enrollment program offered through the University of Texas Austin, and this year, our students were able to accept, were eligible to accept 166 courses. On-Ramps does not just re, does not require a student to pass the TSI A2 prior to enrollment like a dual-credit class would. So by passing this On-Ramps course, these students also meet the college readiness standard and will be TSI exempted in a corresponding subject area at the annual public college or university in Texas. To become and be able to teach an On-Ramps course, our teachers must apply and be accepted by the University of Texas Austin, and then complete 60 hours of training in the summer before school starts, and attend three yearly PDs throughout the year. Each year after, a returning On-Ramps teacher completes 30 hours of training this summer before the next school year begins. So as you can see, our mixed student, students are being taught by very well-prepared educators. Okay, so when we combine the AP exams for three-year higher, all dual-credit courses and the eligible On-Ramps courses, the Advanced Academics Program has saved parents between $403,554 and $3,126,564, depending on which college the student would attend. The financial impact is impressive, but our advanced academic students also gain skills to be successful in their post-secondary education, have a higher self-esteem, and have fewer absences and disciplinary violations. Advanced Academics has worked with our curriculum specialists to intentionally align and strengthen the existing curriculum to support student success on the TSI A2, which is required, which is a required college entrance exam used to assess college readiness in math, reading, and writing. Additionally, Porter High School and New Caney High School have embraced the Texas College Rich Program to capture students who have not yet demonstrated college readiness in math or English. Upon completion of this course, the student receives a certificate which is accepted as a TSI exemption at more than 90 participating institutions of higher education. And the next area of Advanced Academics is our advanced assessments. Some quick highlights here would be that this year, our juniors who elected to take the PFAT and MSQT outscored both state and national averages at both high schools, at all three high school campuses. Our district average composition scores for the ACT and SAT have increased. The TSI A2 is intentionally being administered at each high school, which has increased the amount of students demonstrating college readiness in reading, writing, and math. the amount of students demonstrating college readiness in reading, writing, and math. And lastly, we partner with Texas Tech University to offer things to students wishing to skip a whole grade level or a simple content class such as Spanish Core or English Core. Advanced Academician impacts each high school's accountability rating through their C C M R scores. At least forty percent of a school's rating relies on each graduate earning a C C M R point. Listed are the ways a student can earn a point in New Caney I S D, and those involved are the ways, the pathways that we support Advanced Academician. But C C M R doesn't stop at just an accountability rating. Navigating what comes after graduation can be very overwhelming to parents and students, and we need to provide support and resources to help grad, post-graduates. Here are just a few of the things that we've done this year. We hosted the first district-wide evening college fair, college career fair in October, and helped plan each campus's spring college fair, which was held during the school day. Campus military visits were scheduled through our department, and this year, eleven New Caney I S D students so far have committed to serve. We hosted, for the first time, an application drive called Apply Before the Pie, where students were challenged to submit their college applications before the December first priority deadline that many Texas schools observe. This was supported on campuses, and we had, we had two district-wide events that provided support to our parents. As a result, the number of submitted college applications increased by ninety-two percent. So far this year, our seniors have submitted one thousand six hundred and eighty applications. As you may know, the submission for FASFO and TOSPO this year is a graduation requirement and the first step to a student receiving financial aid. We hosted six campus-based financial aid events, one district-wide event, and Simone and I, Ms. Barnes and I, spent a week on each campus, helping students navigate the complicated process of the FASFO and TOSPO. We dubbed that the FASFO-TOSPO Party. New this year, largely because of Mrs. Barnes' role in our, in our district, she has created and managed the New Caney I S D scholarshiping. It's posted on each school's counseling website and sent out in our bi-monthly C C M R newsletter, and it currently has one hundred and forty-six scholarships listed for our students. New Caney High School and Porter High School hosted an onsite Lone Star College orientation, where over one hundred and twenty students who plan on attending Lone Star this fall were able to meet with an advisor and schedule their fall classes. And many of these events and resources were, were a result of our monthly C C M R professional development. We met primarily with the high school counselors to provide information, but also listed for areas that we could provide the support. So as we close out the school year and we start to plan for the next one, each high school has reported an increase in anticipated enrollment in each of our Advanced Academician programs. Many Texas colleges and universities were test optional when it came to admissions, but are starting to go back to requiring, requiring, they're going to need some S A T and A C T scores. We anticipate an increase in students taking these exams. All right, and we are very excited and looking forward to our G T curriculum for our elementary school year, so please look out for our quarterly challenges, we might call and use me some judges. So in closing, I really just want to thank the school board and our campus and our district administrators on behalf of the students and teachers and parents for ensuring that these programs have the resources and opportunities that they need in order to be successful in their careers moving on. And I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you for letting me share, it was fun. Highly, that's for y'all.
All right, up next is something that we've been working on really since last summer. The district applied with the Holzworth Institute. It's been sponsored by H U V. Holzworth was the main name, the founder of H U V, and so his mom was a public school teacher, and so H U V is very supportive of public education, so much to the point that they built this wonderful campus on Lake Austin, where we can go as a team and really refine skills, look towards the future, and better prepare ourselves for the challenges that are coming ahead. And so Ms. Gates, Ms. Schoffner, and I have been attending the Holzworth Institute since last summer and really working on our leadership pipeline. What that means is, you know what, just as we saw tonight, retirements happen, life happens, and so we need people that are ready to be assistant principals, campus principals, directors, tech directors, superintendents, you name it. We want our people to be the most ready to step into those roles in our district when they come up. And so what you're seeing here, there's a lot of work behind these couple of slides, and a lot of that work was really just us bringing it back to what is termed your leadership definitions task force. And so if you are on our leadership definition task force, we can stand up for me real quick and tell somebody all right. Thank y'all for being here. What this group did, yeah, that's definitely very important. What we tried to do is get somebody from, from every campus, every department, each level, just to provide the folks in our district that honestly, the words that you're about to see, they're already shown. And so this whole leadership definition, what it's about, it's not about, you know, what's on a job description as far as those hard skills that you learn at degrees, that kind of stuff, but it's those soft skills that we feel, that this group feels makes New Caney different, what makes leaders of New Caney different. And so the initial focus is on getting people ready to become, be assistant principals in our district and eventually be a principal. And so our leadership definition task force, obviously, we build a little bit around here. And so builds was an important work for them, for those guys, and we couldn't agree with them more. And so the four areas we came up with, they're up there on the board, builds trust, builds excellence, builds leaders, and builds community. And so what, what those descriptors are underneath this are things that when we look for somebody who's ready to be a leader in our district, you know, how do they show these things? What, what do they do on a daily basis? We like to say you're on an interview every day. Well, these are some of the things we, we would look for in that. What it's not, it's not a checklist that I could, you know, go hand Mr. Grindarco and say, hey, once you check off all twelve of these things off, you're automatically different. Well, it's not that. But what it is, is it's a set of qualities and traits that we feel are important to be a leader in our district, and eventually this is going to go all the way into the classroom. You know, we feel this could be even applied to our students, that, you know, when our students demonstrate these things, which I assure you, some of those you saw in front of me tonight, they most definitely do, that's just what makes a good leader in our district. And so again, it's, it is those very intangible skills that you really can't teach from any of these universities or kiddles you're going to, but it's experiences, it's characteristics, it's traits that we feel are important to be a leader in our district. So Dr. Powers and his team have really done a good job of making it professional, making it pretty. So you'll, you'll start to see this around, our intent is for this to get used, you know, it's not a top secreted thing, it's something that we want our people to talk about. The, it's got to go back one slide, you know, we said we needed something, something that would look good on a t-shirt. That's as simple as we wanted to make it. That's something that we can all remember, something that becomes part of the vocabulary in our campuses and our buildings every day. So this is the first big step in being part of the Holzworth Institute, in getting this leadership definition together. And so obviously, again, going with the name of building, those four competencies are underneath it. So again, this has been a long process. You think, wow, this is too large, you couldn't be here to do that. There's a lot of work still to be going on. We feel it's very beneficial to set the tone for the next group of folks in our district. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. And where we were, where we've been, again, thank the task force for being here. Again, these folks already embody everything you saw up there, and so we definitely want to recognize them for their time, their effort, their input, because we, Ms. Schoffner in this case, if not, if not, we'd have to say three of us. So I thank y'all for your time. Team Chris is as they're referred to, and awesome, I'm sure they, y'all haven't missed anything? Good. Okay. Just wanted to give y'all a note of that, and we will keep on moving, we should be done, I think this time next year, but we'll process. Just want, that was a foundational piece, just wanted to give y'all a note of where we are. So you'll start to see that around.
Legislative affairs met two weeks ago. We discussed the working draft of our legislative priorities and established a timeline for Advanced Academician qualifications to more strategic consideration. Also, our last meeting had Andre Young, our representative of State Board of Education, and she came and talked to the committee a little bit about what the State Board of Education does for us, and how that's under our aim for us to help their advocacy for our students and our staff. So we will need to get. Where do we begin?
Robert Raynor's relevant board.
Yes, so we had a meeting with the Instruction Committee a week ago. It was amazing. First of all, I have to commend the, the department, there's been so many changes in special ed with the reading dyslexia and the special ed umbrella, that it is just overwhelming. And I was very impressed with the, the work that's gone into it, the time that's been given, and the thought. You know, years ago when I got on board, one of my biggest memories was, the first time we all sat and talked about things, I thought, my gosh, they already know, they know what I was wondering about. That's kind of what I felt like at this meeting. They know, they know the questions we had, and they had it prepared to answer. So they explained that students must meet two components of eligibility for special ed, interesting news to me. So there are thirteen disability conditions considered by T E A, and they have to have specially developed instruction. So for me, in my profession, I was like, oh, I hear about disability all the time, I'm always talking about this. It gives me a little bit of talking points representation and helps me understand how I can guide these people going into the school system. Dyslexia is moving under the special ed umbrella, but because of House Bill thirty-nine twenty-eight, they created new rules for the evaluation, identification, and intervention. So it is one of the thirteen components of special ed identification, and is now considered as specially designed instruction. So it's a lot of work, these are a lot of kit. I'm impressed with the work that you're doing. What does this transition look like for N C I S D? It was previously identified and serviced under the bugle for special programs. I know I wrote my new script for it, so thank you for doing that, but it's now under the special ed umbrella. Existing dyslexia evaluated physicians will migrate to sped. The specialist physicians will migrate and be called dyslexia interventionalists. Here's the beauty of this, dyslexia is now a funded mandate. So often the state says you get to do, but we don't pay. So this time, they are actually giving us about fifty-eight hundred dollars more for student identification. That's as far as I'm concerned, because that makes me happy. To date, this school year, six hundred and fifty-one initial evaluations have been completed for all areas of special ed qualification. Of the six fifty-one, two sixty-five were for specific learning disability, which includes dyslexia. That's a lot of kids that we can touch. We have signed and sent on additional three hundred and ninety-four students. Once a student qualifies, we must reevaluate every three years, which adds roughly nine hundred additional evaluations per year. The numbers are amazing. Progress, and that's what I was the most impressed with, is there is progress. You know, we hear so much about the complaints and the problems, but to actually be proven, data proving that we are making progress in this area is just incredible. Results determine accountabilities and measuring stick of sped performance. In spite of ever increasing rigor in the state's star assessment, students receiving special education services are making gains. Over the last three years, our students have made progress in all-star three through eight tests. Twenty-seven improved, twenty-seven percent improvement in math, thirty-seven percent improvement in reading, science was twenty-three percent, and social studies was one. Over the last three years, our students have made progress in all high school star U O C tests. Algebra, one was forty-one percent, biology twenty-five percent. U S history was a one percent improvement. English one and two is a hundred and one percent improvement. You guys, that's fantastic. Over the last three years, students who exited sped continue to make gains in the subsequent year in all areas of star three through eight. Math thirty-six percent, reading thirty-eight, science fifty-nine, and social studies fifty percent. So my thoughts after this meeting are, are we perfect? Absolutely not. Do we know that we're not perfect? Absolutely we do. Are we taking steps to correct the imperfections and make it, make this Department of Education in our district better going forward? I really believe that we are. Thank you.
I want to thank those of you that actually serve all these committees, other than me, but are wearing different hats, these are all these, we certainly appreciate it and we're thankful that it helps us definitely to understand your world and your profession is about education. So I want to thank you, and I also want to thank the other board members, you know, for participating in these committees that we have together, because it really helps us to dive in and shows that we're dedicated to continuing to work in this area, so we appreciate that.
Number six on the agenda is the consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchase reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of facilities and construction items, and consideration of student services items. Are there any questions or further discussion we have on the second? Do we have a motion on the second panel or just bring it later? I've got a motion line, it's a little, say it quietly. There may no further discussion, I hope we'll be taking all those in favor, say aye. Aye. The opposed? The abstaining? And wish you prayers. And I have a number seven on the agenda to close the meeting. The board will now adjourn in closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Public Rights Act. Texas Government Code five five point zero seven four for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code five five point zero seven one for attorney consultation, and Government Code five five one point zero seven two for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. In action as a result, a closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes to go to meeting. The time is now seven oh seven. You.